There it goes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, just a minute. I'll just record it here. I think we're ready.
Is that recording?
Yes, that's on.
Okay. Raina, thank you.
Thank you.
And Carly, thank you.
Wow, we haven't had these technical partners.
And Tom, thank you. Okay. So let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
Trustee McKnight?
Here.
Steven Gabba?
Present.
Trustee Cheney and Mike Mojer are absent, and trustee Lindberg will be joining us shortly.
Okay. Raina, would you please read the notice of public hearing?
Please take notice that the village board of the village of Warwick will hold a public hearing on the village's draft updated comprehensive plan on the 17th day of October 2022 at 7:30 p.m. at Village Hall, 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York. A copy of the draft updated comprehensive plan is on file in the office of the village clerk and is available for inspection by interested persons during village clerk's business hours. And the updated draft comprehensive plan has also been posted on the village's website, www.villageofwarwick.org. The village board will, at the above-stated date, time, and place, hear all persons interested in the draft updated comprehensive plan. Persons may appear in person or by agent. Written comments regarding the draft updated comprehensive plan will be considered, but all such written comments must be received by the village board at or prior to the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Raina.
So as a form of introduction, I will, in a minute, introduce Peter Fairweather. He was the planner that we worked with, that the master, Comprehensive Master Plan Committee worked with over approximately a year and a half. And it was quite a large and comprehensive committee, I believe. I just want to mention their names at the beginning of this public hearing. Barry Chaney, who was also the chair of the committee. Judy Batista, resident at large for cultural and mental health advocate. Elizabeth Bourne, resident at large from the African-American community. Scott Bourne, zoning board of appeals. Rosemary Cooper, Albert Wisner, Public Library. Jack Ellis, Warwick Valley Historical Society. Matthew Finn, the Architectural and Historic Review Board. Carly Foster, Community Together and Village Trustee. Corinne Ayarata, Warwick Valley Chamber of Commerce. Robert M. Kennedy III, resident at large, and the Town Planning Board. Tom McKnight, Village of Warwick Planning Board, Village Trustee. Susan Metzger, resident at large. And Susan is connected with the Historical Society, but also with other organizations. So I just want to thank the committee members for the amount of work that happened over the year and a half. Peter was our guide, and I thank you, Peter, for all the work that you put into this very ambitious and very, you know, I think, good project. But now is the time when the public sees it, and the public can give us their input. I just want to mention, we did, we have received some responses. And Peter, after you finish your introduction and going through the plan, just mention those people that emailed us or sent us information. And I'm not going to read them all, but they will be part of the public record, so. So Peter, I'll give you the floor. Peter Fairweather.
Thank you. And so we're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation that's really going to highlight the process and the outcome of the plan. There are 40 copies of that presentation available here, which can be made available to the public. There are also an additional 10 copies, hard copies of the plan. So the agenda that we're going to go through is talk about the purpose of the plan, the process we used, the vision that resulted, and the goals that came out of that vision, and then the recommended actions and the process of implementation. And then, at the end, we'll take comments and talk about next steps. Onward.
Onward.
The planned purpose. The Comprehensive Plan is identified in New York State law. And it's, as it says here, "The Comprehensive Plan means the materials written and/or graphic, including but not limited to maps, charts, studies, resolutions, reports, and other descriptive material that identify the goals, objectives, principles, guidelines, policies, standards, devices, and instruments for the immediate and long-range protection enhancement, growth, and development of the village." Basically, it is a policy device that sets a direction for the village's future. It goes through a public process, is duly adopted by the village board. And, for example, all subsequent zoning changes should be able to be justified based upon policies and recommendations in the Comprehensive Plan. So that's the role. It sort of sets a direction for the future. And the process is overseen by a steering committee that met monthly, and the mayor has already identified those people. And this is my chance to provide another statement of gratitude. This is a group that worked very hard, very cooperatively, brought a lot of substance to the plan, and a lot of positive suggestions. It really was a pleasure to work with them, and I kind of feel bad that we're at the end of the process here, because I enjoyed our sessions together, which is, I don't always say that, so.
Well, also, I just want to interrupt that. It was also during COVID, so it was definitely, in some cases, a challenge, but it was, it worked really well.
Does anybody in the audience need a hard copy? You can't see the screen.
If you'd like the presentation. And also, it will be on the website for the plan shortly. I just emailed our webmaster a copy. So the process, there was a fair amount of community outreach. And on this slide, it lists the different activities that ranged from the monthly meetings, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, to a whole variety of focus group meetings and interview processes that ranged from, there were posters in the library that were up there for, I think it was a month, where people could, there were different topics that were identified, and people could respond to those topics as well as others. There were outreach to particular groups that ranged from Hispanic merchants to the Chamber of Commerce, to civic groups, and downtown merchants, and a whole variety of individuals, as well as sessions at the farmer's market and a survey that had a substantial number of responses, both from village residents and from town residents. So there was really an extensive public outreach process. Again, it really helped inform the plan and provided us with guidance in addition to what the committee brought to us. The vision that emerged out of all of this, and, you know, this is the kind of thing that steers the ship overall. "The Village of Warwick plays a unique role as a location where people gather face-to-face to participate in and celebrate commerce, culture, and community life." You know, that's sort of stating the obvious, but that's increasingly important in the world in which we live today, not only from kind of a social and community perspective, but even from an economic development perspective. The idea of having a gathering place where people can share ideas, get to know one another, and take on joint projects is really important. So the planned vision that came out of our discussions was, "The village is an essential gathering place. This plan is intended to strengthen the village as a 21st century gathering place by fostering attractive, walkable, human-scale development that provides a sense of place and a sense of history. Abundant and diverse economic opportunities, an inclusive community of economic, ethnic, and social diversity, strong residential neighborhoods, celebrations of arts, culture, and civic life, sustainability and resilience in the face of climate change, and physical infrastructure to support and sustain the village's life in an effective and affordable So part of this, then, is we start looking at, what are the goals that we need to set to move the village towards that direction of maintaining and strengthening its role as an essential gathering place? And that's putting the goals in the context of, "This is a village that has little developable land." If you can see the map here, the yellow spots on the map are the developable land in the village, and there's not much. So it makes sense that the plan focuses on preserving and strengthening its existing assets, as well as cultivating new sources of strength to enhance the quality of life in the village. And again, the good news, which I think should be no surprise to anybody in this room or otherwise watching, is the village is starting from a position of strength. You know, this is a community with a high quality of life to begin with. So the question is, what do we do to keep that in place and prepare it for the changes that are likely to come as the 21st century moves forward? So once, as we looked at this, we looked at four elements of community life that should be addressed by the goal-setting process. Quality of place, as found in the quality of the built environment, housing in neighborhoods, parks and recreation, as well as the culture of governance in the village. And this was an important part of this plan, is not only sort of the anatomy of the structure, the physical structures and proximities and so on, but the physiology of the village, the process, the culture that people use to build and sustain quality of life, really got a substantial focus in this plan, and deservedly so. It's one of the things that's helped build Warwick's advantage, and the plan is intended to strengthen that. Commerce and culture, that support and bring meaning to daily life was another focus of the goals. Connectivity among residents, businesses, and civic groups, partner municipalities, and others, provided by things ranging from transportation systems, including parking and sidewalks, to digital infrastructure. And then environmental sustainability and resilience that keeps the village safe and affordable in the face of climate change. So those are the four major areas that the goals address. Now we'll talk about each one of those areas. First, quality of place. The goal, here are the goals, and they're, "Safer than the quality of residential experience and the quality of life in the village," and their recommended actions under each goal. And this would address a few things, like making sure the quality of design is well-regulated in village regulations, that, among other things, that there should be ongoing communication among the boards involved in managing the built environment to ensure that it maintains as high a quality built environment as possible. Goal two, improve affordability of housing in the village while maintaining the quality of place. And this is not a unique situation to the village, but it's an important part of maintaining a balanced, diverse community, and there are recommendations about addressing what's called the missing middle in the housing market, to make sure that there's starter homes and homes for middle-income folks, as well as the sort of upper and lower ranges of the income distribution in the village. Goal three, continue to instill and encourage dialogue in the community. Again, this goes back to making sure the process continues to work. And, you know, there were recommendations about, again, ensuring the boards communicate with one another, ensuring that there are opportunities for members of different minority groups to participate in the village and to be able to make their needs known, as well as to make sure they're aware of opportunities that they can have to volunteer on boards and other activities in the village, to, again, strengthen that dialogue, strengthen the diversity of the conversation in the village. Commerce and culture, and there's a variety of goals here. Encourage redevelopment of vacant and underutilized parcels in the village. Again, not a lot of vacant land here, so we have to look at the vacant lands that are available, what can we do with them, but also, how do we make sure that the underutilized parcels that may have been vibrant uses in the past, but now provide some opportunities for use? Where are they, and how can, what are the uses that could be done, and what are the kinds of things you need to pay attention to in terms of the design and so forth? Promote a balance between diversified retail and restaurants in the village. You know, that's, in a lot of sense, a lot of the economic base of the village is in retail and restaurants, to make sure that opportunities for retail stay available in the village as the restaurant trade continues to expand and as hospitality and tourism continue to grow. And it's not to state it explicitly here, but also keeping the residential component in balance with those two as well. Goal three, accommodate new forms of economic activities or economic actors that reuse existing structures. Again, just over the few years of COVID, we've seen a reinvention of office work and a whole variety of economic activities, from those professional services to distribution. The question is, what are the particular functions that fit well in the village, that can be adapted for use in the village, that can help maintain vitality and even increase it in the years ahead? Continue to promote the village as the center of economic, cultural, and social activity. You know, because this goes beyond just making sure there's enough stuff happening, but making sure there's also connections between, let's say, tourism and the arts, the retail sector and the arts, so that the village continues to provide that center for economic conversations, cultural activities, and social activities. That's a unique role that it plays right now in the Warwick area. Support effective and expeditious review of projects in the village. Again, the village has done very well historically with moving forward with new projects, new development. It's always good to look at, are there ways we can streamline the process so you get the outcome that you want with as little expenditure of energy and resources? And there are some recommendations about that. Encourage artists to live and practice in the village, and foster connections between artists and their audiences to promote tourism and enhance quality of life in the village. So those are the goals related to commerce and culture. Onward. Connectivity. We've got four goals. Improve the village's capacity to accommodate parking demand. You know, that's the ongoing tension in any successful community, is how do we maintain adequate parking in a way that doesn't disrupt the other functions that take place in the village, from retail to residential, tourism, cultural activities? So that's, and there's a series of recommendations about parking studies and ways to make better use of existing parking opportunities. Goal two, accommodate streetscape improvement strategies to better accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic in the village. The extent to which the village serves as a center for non-vehicular traffic successfully and safely, the stronger it will be economically, culturally, and socially. So there are recommendations that address that. Goal three, focus new investments in parks and recreation on improving flexible outdoor recreation spaces, active transportation corridors and trails. And again, this is a whole area that's being reinvented, the whole idea of outdoor recreation. Just in my childhood, summer outdoor recreation meant Little League baseball, just about period. And now, you know, there's just such a wide variety of opportunities that families, children, other residents can participate in. It's important that the parks reflect that reality, and there are recommendations about that. Ensure that affordable broadband internet is available throughout the village. That's the other part of connectivity. Roads and parking are important, pedestrian access, but also making sure that people in the village, as they do their work, whether it's remotely or through online e-commerce or whatever, have the infrastructure so they can make a living here, they can make the connections they need to keep the village a prosperous place. And then lastly, resilience and sustainability. There were two goals. Improve environmental sustainability and resilience throughout the village of Warwick. And then there was a series, there were a series of recommendations about ways to do that. And two, ensure that the village sewer and water infrastructure can accommodate future demand without diminishing the quality of service provided to residents and businesses. And again, a series of recommendations related to that. So when we talk about actions and implementation, there was a series of really fancy animations that went with this slide that we lost through some, a couple technological glitches. But the idea is that each goal, as I mentioned, is accompanied by a variety of recommended actions to accomplish that goal. And there's an example there, under resilience and sustainability, there is goal one, and there are three recommended actions under that one goal. And throughout the plan, that's the format. There's the goal, the desire state, and then how do we get there? Then the second part of this, which is really where the rubber meets the road, is the prioritized action plan, which you see on the right hand of this slide. It lists each of the recommended actions under, and it shows, for example, immediate priority. Those should be done within two years of the plan being adopted. It lists the action, it references the planned goal. You can see R1, R1, so on, C3. And then it lists the action and the responsible party. So looking at this chart, you can tell, what's the action? What goal does it refer to? Who's responsible, and when does it have to get done? So this is put forward as a tool to help with the implementation of the plan. So that's kind of the quick tour of the Comprehensive Plan, and again, represented the hard work of the committee for about a year and a half. And at this point, we're open for questions, comments. Again, we've received comments, I guess we've gotten three.
Four, actually. And I'll just mention, we received comments from the Orange County Department of Planning, which is a review process that has to happen, that's mandatory, but they gave us some good marks. And then also, Village of Warwick Planning Board comments on the review of the plan. And their comments were fantastic. They really, I think, focused and really looked at all the aspects of the plan and gave us some really good suggestions. And then also, there was comments from Raymond and Lucine Marr, and they were directed towards our clustered zoning. And then also comments from Margaret McNeely, Maggie McNeely. And she had also really terrific comments that we will review, and, you know, hopefully they'll be part of the implementation process. Just to say to the public that this public hearing will not be closed, because we anticipate, hopefully people will see this and will want to, you know, add their comments. So it will remain open for, until the next board meeting. So that's a two-week period. And we also plan, as a committee, to remeet after all the comments come, and to review the comments, and to, you know, kind of sort them out, see where they go, and see if they, things can really add another dimension to the Comprehensive Master Plan. So with that, I think we'll open it up to the public. Yes?
Thanks for all the hard work you did. I read through the plan. I have some comments. And Patrick Gallagher.
Thank you.
On West Street. Regarding references to the safeguarding the quality of residential experience and neighborhood quality of life, accommodating pedestrian and bicycle traffic while fostering traditional neighborhood design means having respect for the traditional neighborhoods that already exist. On West Street between Elm and Pond Hill, there are 43 homes. There are at least another 85 in Van Duren, Owl River, Division, Factory, and John. Many more on Wheeler, McEwen, Cottage, and North Street. The draft Comprehensive Plan only mentioned Pond Hill and Oakland Avenue, and only as locations where undertaking intersection improvement strategies are in order. This is grossly insufficient and neglects consideration for the safety of the residents of 128 or more homes on or proximate to West Street, with nothing being done to discourage the constant excessive speed of an enormous amount of local and commercial traffic. I want to stress that this is not an enforcement matter, but police do what they can. The village needs to take effective administrative action before a tragedy occurs. Please take this to heart, consider these residents, and take short and long-term measures to protect those in the existing traditional neighborhoods. A plan must include them and go beyond ambiguous language and onto the immediate action priority list. I outlined a list of suggestions in a letter to the village on September 21st, requested outreach, and have not received response or acknowledgement of receipt. The inclusion task force listed, under immediate priorities, speaks only of broadening participation in the village economy, but in the same breath suggests regulating short-term rentals. Main Street is not the only street in the village. Many of our neighbors who are not on any boards are hosting visitors who spend freely and expansively in the village. Significant revenues are realized. It's cheaper than the much-boughted ratables aggressively pursued and preserves rather than disrupts neighborhoods. When hosted in a primary residence, the committee should grasp that this is a valid aging-in-place strategy and should be applauded and encouraged, not de facto taxed and discouraged. Appointing and supporting liaisons who will actively reach out to the neighborhoods, and neighbors who are not on a board or the interest groups that the boards normally engage with, is a priority and belongs also on the immediate priority list. Lastly, the audio for these meetings, and this is unrelated to this evening's problems, completely understandable. The audio for these meetings is painfully difficult to follow and broadcast, and people quickly lose their interest when you can't understand what's being said. Thanks.
Thank you. Could we have a copy of this?
I emailed it.
You did? Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Are we allowed to speak in response? There is. So what, the plan calls for traffic calming along West Street?
It's not on the priority list. It's not in the first things to be accomplished within a year or two.
So your concern is it needs to be in the first two years.
They need to be named?
Yeah, not only does it need to be specified, but it needs to be in the first year, because someone's going to get hurt on West Street.
Yeah.
There's no question about it. And, you know, I won't go into the details. I sent a letter to the village on the 21st of September. That pretty much outlines something that wouldn't be expensive that could be done. We need influencers. You know, the cops can do a catch-and-release program, but.
You know, Patrick, I just want to mention one thing, too. I mean, the village did change the speed limit throughout the entirety of the village.
Absolutely.
And that was an administrative thing that was done, and so it's not fair to say that they haven't. But the other thing is that we are, we have made it a priority. It's not just West Street. It is Galloway, it is Forrester, it's streets throughout this entire village. And so we are working with New York State DOT engineers to come up with, hopefully, a more comprehensive plan to start putting in traffic calming measures. So, you know, we want to do it, not nilly-willy, but we want to do it with specificity and, you know.
We don't need speed bumps, and we don't need, you know, we need signage, of which there are no slowdown signs between Elm and Pond Hill. I painted one on the street, both sides, and the village hired an outside contractor to scrape it and paint over it. It was neatly done. You can, you can paint lines in this village, you can paint green ones and blue ones, but you can't paint slowdown on West Street.
It does say slow in multiple areas on West Street.
Yeah, not between Elm and Pond Hill.
Okay. Well, vandalism is not the right way to do that either, so.
Okay, that's great. I guess it's free speech if it's one thing and vandalism if it's another.
And let's focus on the Comprehensive Master Plan.
I think we are, but thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, my heart is in my throat every time I see those middle schoolers and high schoolers walking, and they should be able to walk to the village. I mean, what a gift, you know?
Right.
The schools close enough that they can walk to the village and have a little bit of independence and enjoy the best that Warwick has to offer. So I think of West Street as a priority. I have since I was on the sidewalk committee back in 2007.
Okay. Thank you.
Children in baby carriages with their mothers pushing them are honked at on West Street all the time.
Yeah. I just wanted to, so I, all of this is well-taken, because, and I agree that these are really high priorities, and this is something that the board has also been discussing. One thing I did want to mention, and I didn't mention it during your presentation, but I feel like we should now, is the way that the, the way that the action plan is set up, it actually, you know, some things do take longer than others, and so it's also set up not just kind of in priority order, because the traffic issue or the speeding issue is extremely high priority. But some of the major, like, infrastructure changes, those will take time. You know, one of the other things that we're in the process of doing right now is gathering data about speeding on the different streets to help kind of with the planning. The board is going to have a working meeting with DOT, as the mayor mentioned. So this is definitely a huge focus. So I don't want you to think that, yeah, so that is something that we see as really important.
There's a simple, and I appreciate what you're saying, there's a very simple strategy for emailing a broad group of people to whom the village very likely has access, that, expressing that, you know, to the PTA, to the school board, to the bus drivers, to the village employees, to the town employees, to the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, I'm talking about an email.
Just.
And saying to people, "Look, you know, it's really important that you and your constituents, whoever they might be, observe the speed limit." That's not expensive and not difficult to do in the short term.
That's good feedback. And we've talked about other public outreach and signage, and so that's good feedback.
We need influencers.
The other.
Aren't you an influencer, sir?
I apparently am. Yeah.
And I just, and I kid.
I was complimented more than once on the, on the. I was complimented more than once on the, on the penmanship. This was not raw graffiti.
But then should-
I'm not really laughing about graffiti. That's not what this is about.
Yeah.
Let's get back to the complaint.
Please don't let me upset you any further, Mr. McKnight.
The other, we should set some ground rules for-
Yes, yes, that's fine.
You know, but we need to be respectful and, so the other thing you mentioned, kind of like neighborhood engagement, and so one of the other things, and we got another comment about that as well, and, and that's also something that we've been working on is this idea of doing neighborhood-based listening sessions because I think we, I think you're right, the village does a really great job of reaching out to all of these different civic groups. You know, we're, we're constantly talking about how to do outreach more effectively and that is one of the solutions that we've been talking about and it was really nice to see some of those ideas come in fresh and to kind of validate that that's something that we should be doing.
Yeah. Very good. Yes, please?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Carrie Boll and I'm a resident of the village.
Hi, Carrie.
And I'm speaking as a resident of the village of Warwick. And I am particularly grateful to see the following in the draft of the new comprehensive plan. Addressing climate change, parking, traffic management, serving underrepresented communities and encouraging more engagement in village decision-making, honoring the arts and respecting the village's history, protecting and securing the village's water supply. Thank you for hearing the residents of Warwick and reflecting that in this thoughtful comprehensive plan. My suggestions for the, for the draft comprehensive plan are based mainly on concern with strengthening the language in regards to environmental actions. Under goal R1, resilience and sustainability on page 25. Recommended action, implemented policies to reduce reliance upon fossil fuels by encouraging the increase use of geothermal heating and new construction and building rehabilitations through the creation of zoning subdivision regulations, that, da, 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 whenever feasible. Firstly, what do encourage and feasible actually mean? Please consider strengthening the language and codifying environmental practices. There is no greater urgency than addressing the village's sustainability, even if it's not feasible because of increased cost, because of only cost taxpayers far more in the long run. The town of Woodstock's comprehensive plan has examples of meaningful language incorporated to protect the environment. Page 26, recommended action, enhance capacity to monitor issues related to climate change and energy conservation by designating a citizens committee or other group to follow these issues and inform village government on important related topics. Going a step further, the village could create a position as environmental resource officer. This position's role would be to evaluate building applications from a point of view of sustainability and to mitigate costs and damage in the case of natural disaster, to serve residents and businesses when making landscaping decisions such as buffers, to collectively obtain shared resources to reduce costs, and to monitor construction throughout the village to verify compliance to the highest degree to protect drinking water and waterways. I have some other things that I probably will email to you.
Okay, very good.
One of those was additionally for clear public communication, it'd be incredibly helpful to have a large screen at the meeting so that both the board and the public can see the plans as they're being discussed. How long has that thing been there?
A year and-
How long has planning boards been using it?
I do not know. It was put there specifically because of a request for, from a resident who could not see the plans and had to come up and, and, and look over people's shoulders. And so that was, you know, we, we responded to that because we felt that the planning board of all the boards could use this, so.
So what needs to happen for that to present plans during?
I would think that the applicant should be aware that they have the capability of doing that.
That's a great, yeah, yeah. Okay, in conclusion, the comprehensive plan is an opportunity to set meaningful principles and immediate, and immediate and long-term protections for the village for the next decade. The time is now to make environmental sustainability the priority to ensure our future. Please strengthen the language on this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie. You know, I just want, I'm going to pass it on to, to Tom because he's been working on our application for Climate Smart Communities. And part of that was developing a committee, just as you speak of. And so, Tom, I'll give you the floor.
Yeah, Carrie, great feedback. So what we've done, first of all, if you look at the, the feedback from the outreach we did, we did a postcard to every village resident with a, with a survey, Peter helped with that, we were at farmers markets. We got a decent bit of responses and if I recall, 80% of the responses were all in favor of furthering our sustainability efforts. Pretty overwhelming compared to all the other questions on the survey. So as a result, what we've done is I, I've drafted something to, to stand up a conservation advisory council that would have a larger role within the village to have a focus on all the environmental aspects. It would work as another board in conjunction with some of the other boards. That'll take some time to stand up. In the interim, what we did is we created a Climate Smart Community Task Force to pursue this New York State program to achieve a certification. It keeps peeping at me.
So I replaced these batteries and now they're dying. Do you mind if we pause for a moment so I can record it?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Okay.
I cannot believe-
Hold that thought, Carrie, because I want to, I want to get into that.
Don't go away, we'll be right back.
Okay, just a moment. I will be right back. I can't believe today. So the planets are aligned in a certain way today.
When you make your comments, Tom, when she comes back, it would be good to talk about, like, the cost savings from all of these sustainability measures.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm very sorry.
Top's not at all.
It's today. Okay?
Good, okay. So let me readdress it. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm hearing committee and committee and committee. And I, I think committees are great. I think directly into the comprehensive plan, perhaps the language can be strengthened there. That's the only teeth we have.
Yep, got it. So let me, let me kind of roll back to that for, for a second. So in order to get things done, yes, you do need to have committees so it's not one person making a decision, right? So it's not just making committees for community's sake. But as part of this Climate Smart Community program, become certified, we basically took language that they are, one of their high priority actions is to include sustainability language in the comprehensive plan. So that was the model for what we put in. Yet maybe there's room to, to strengthen that a bit more, but we say things like environmental resource officer, all sorts of things that, that for me are conjuring up similarities that we have within the Conservation Advisory Council that we're kind of kicking around as well as the Climate Smart Community.
Okay, I mean, that piece is separate. I'm talking specifically about-
You mentioned a couple of things, I'm trying to address each, each of them.
Okay, I see. But yeah, I mean, I think the priority for the comprehensive plan is to have, it's now or never, you know, like, we need to-
Sure. And in the last plan for 2004, there was zero about sustainability.
I know, and that's why I commented how grateful I was that climate change was acknowledged and sustainability is an important part of this plan. It's impressive, it's great, let's take it to the finish line.
Can I just bring up one thing about the nature of comprehensive plans? Because I hear, hear comments about wiggle room and that sort of stuff pretty regularly and justifiably, but I, I think it's important in the context of a comprehensive plan that you maintain some leeway in terms of what your options are. Because if you identify a particular option and for whatever reason it gets stonewalled, then you've gotten, you've gotten away forward. Whereas if you have a menu and one of them gets stopped, you can still go forward to another plan. So that's why a lot of times the comprehensive plan will provide a menu of options rather than one particular route, so that there are multiple paths to move the goal.
I understand. I think when you say term like feasibility though with the developer, that they should use best practices as long as it's feasible, like no expenses spared in other avenues, but it's not feasible, it's not cost whatever. I mean, I, it's a little too flexible perhaps.
Yeah. I hear you. But we really, I think there's opportunity here to strengthen, like, over encouraging in some cases it could make sense to explore policies that will require. Like, would that be kind of, would that meet the need? Because in some cases, we may not know exactly what those policies are at this point in time, but we should explore what those policies might be.
And, and I'll give you an example. I mean, we can't force necessarily developers to do a particular clean energy treatment. Now, what, things that we can do is look to something like the New York Stretch Energy Code, which basically stretches it one cycle in the future, 12 to 18 months, where it's basically what's coming down the line for New York State energy codes. And so if we explore something like that, it, that will allow the developers to choose from a menu that's more environmentally friendly, right? Another thing we're looking at to reduce fossil fuels is CCA, Community Choice Aggregation, where essentially, well, that was what the last meeting was pretty much about, but what that's going to allow us to do is to, is to basically, for the community, have collective purchasing power to allow basically O and R be the delivery mechanism for electricity that's derived from clean energy, right? Instead of fossil fuels. That's one thing that we can do. Now, it might only, it, it might reduce, you know, the average user's bill, $8 a month, which is fine, it's not life-changing, but the underlying thing there is that it's using a renewable source, right? So those are different things that we can explore, but we can't force a developer, say, you know, thou shalt do geothermal energy, right? So I, I think the point is, if you have specific ideas on how to strengthen that, we're all ears, we have to be, I think as Peter mentioned, have a little bit of leeway in case years down the road-
But you mentioned Woodstock's plan, so I think we should take a look at that, definitely.
Yeah. You said you'll email those as well?
Yeah, I have some other ideas, but I don't know if, like, the comprehensive plan itself is, or maybe it needs to go to a subcommittee, so I'm going to reflect on that since we have a little more time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Brown, you were part of the committee?
No comment, thank you.
No comment, okay.
Case to observe and support.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I think we're, we're done for this evening, but we will be keeping the public hearing open for two weeks. And if anybody has comments, we have copies of the plan. They can stop by Village Hall and get a copy for themselves, or they can get it online. It's on our, the village's website, so you can get it there.
Should I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yes, absolutely. Very good, so.
I will motion to keep the public hearing open until the next board meeting.
Well-
Or is that-
Can you give a date for that, just for the-
November 7th.
I'll motion to keep the, the public hearing open until November 7th.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then just a, a quick note is we do now have a virtual, we have a suggestion box at Village Hall as well as a virtual suggestion box that you can access on the homepage too. So, you know, if you don't know who to email about something in particular, you can use that. And then we do, the emails go directly to the mayor, Raina and myself, and then every board, once a month at the board meetings, they also all get shared to the, the other trustees. And then if it's relevant to a trustee or anyone else in between, then they go to other places.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but it is not in my experience that a response is forthcoming when things are sent.
We're working on a response to you, sir, so.
No, no, I mean-
It'll be forthcoming. It'll be forthcoming. Oh, historically?
Yes. So I just, you know.
Depends if the questions are-
Are pertinent or-
Or rhetorical?
They're not rhetorical, they're pertinent.
Very good. So thank you, and we'll move on to the next portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to accept the reports or make, make a motion to accept the minutes of September 19th, 2022, and October 3rd, 2022?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion-
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And a motion to accept the reports, September 2022, Clerk's Office, Tax Collection, Justice Department, Building Department and Department of Public Works.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you wait, second?
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. And a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount Sorry.
97.
Seconded.
97?
208-997 dot five six.
Dot five six, okay. Stands corrected, so may I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chief, do you have anything for us? Apple Fest review?
Apple Fest was going very well. We have a wrap-up meeting this Wednesday and I'll be working with my knowledge on the Halloween parade for barricades and local.
Right, okay, very good. Under correspondence this evening, we have, of course, the letters that I mentioned earlier that were addressing the comprehensive master plan. We also have a letter from Apple Fest 2022 Coordinator Christina Holman, expressing appreciation for the village's support of the 32nd Annual Festival. And we also have a letter from New York State Department of Health regarding the completion of water supply emergency plan updates. And we have a few announcements this evening, and Tom, would you take the first one?
The village of Warwick will hold a tree planting event at Veterans Memorial Park on Thursday, October 27th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. Thanks to a grant from the New York State Forestry Council in conjunction with the Warwick Valley Gardeners. All are welcome.
Okay, thank you. And Carly, would you take the Halloween?
Should I read the whole thing?
You know what, I think you can edit, like, maybe the-
Yeah.
That part shouldn't-
Okay, so the Halloween parade and costume context, contest. The village of Warwick Recreation Department and the Warwick Lions Club will be hosting a spooktacular Halloween costume parade on Monday, October 31st. The lineup for that will take place at 4:30 p.m. on High Street. The parade will start at 5:00 and it'll go from Main Street to Railroad Avenue, and a costume contest with prizes will take place on Railroad Avenue. The categories are most original, scariest, best group, family, group or fam, and/or family, and cutest. And the contest will be divided into the age groups of ages 0 to 5, 6 to 9, 10 to 14, and adult and family ensemble. There will be refreshments sponsored by ShopRite. Also, that village residents are invited to scare the mayor. This is our annual Scare the Mayor contest. This is a sixth one. And the mayor will be looking for the scariest, most frightful, scream-worthy Halloween-decorated house in the village. The contest is free to enter. So new this year, if your home won first prize the previous year, you are ineligible to participate in this year's contest. To register your house, please, please call Village Hall at 845-986-2031, or you can email clerk@villageofwarwick.org by Thursday, October 27th. On Friday, starting at 6:00, you'll receive a visit from the mayor.
And guest judges.
And guest judges, who will deem the ghouls and ghosts who scare them the most.
And actually, if you could do the first and second, because there's an important piece there.
Okay, all right. So first, second and third prize winners will receive a plaque that brags, "I scared the mayor." that brags, "I scared the mayor." Additionally, one select home will receive the Carl Shabel Award.
Shabel.
Shabel, I apologize. Award for exemplary skill and thematic creativity in honor of late Village of Warwick Planning Board Member Carl Shabel, who created the original haunted house on Oakland Court.
That's good.
Sweet.
Thank you. And Village Leaf Pickup?
I have that, you want me to do that?
Yes, please.
The Village of Warwick, every fall does a leaf pickup, so the, the village will begin picking up leaves November 1st. Leaves must be placed at the curb in paper bags. Thank you, chief. The last pickup will be during the week of December 12th. To ensure final pickup, leaves must be placed at the curb prior to December 19th. And we also have the village brush pile, so residents could bring their bagged leaves to the brush pile located at the DPW Barn in Veterans Memorial Park, which is open every weekend, Saturday and Sunday, in October and November, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Great.
And, well, by the way, and then we have a couple times a year, material processors who come in and turn the leaves and the brush into a sort of mulch that residents could then reuse.
Compost, actually.
Yeah.
And then I'd like to make an announcement about a program, the New York State Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program, and this is to help people who need help paying their water bills. So let me give a little bit of an explanation. First of all, I think it's misleading that it says low income because in our conversations with the administration of, of this program, that they take many things into, under their wing and, and, and look at carefully. So the, the approval, though, is based primarily on income, but to date, you can, everything is into consideration and will, and they are trying to approve as many applications as possible. And just to give you a little bit of background, it's a Water and Sewer Emergency Assistant Program funded through federal resources. Benefits are based on the amount of unpaid water and sewer bills owed by the applicant. This assistant is targeted to low-income households, and income guidelines mirror that of the Home Energy Assistant Program, HEAP. Benefits are based on the actual amount of water and/or sewer arrears, up to a maximum of $2,500 per water or sewer provider, or $5,000 if water and sewer services are combined and per, per household. Benefits are paid directly to the household's water and sewer vendors. On October 1st, 2022, this program began, and so houses may be eligible. The criteria are income, household size, households that include U.S. citizens, U.S. nationals, or qualified aliens, and the amount owed to water and sewer providers. And the primary applicants must provide proof of identity, proof of residence, documentation of earned and unearned income, a water and sewer, or combined water and sewer bill listing their permanent and primary residence, and a valid social security number. And all of this information is on our website. There is a number to call. I can tell you that already some, some of our residents have started utilizing this, and it's been extremely helpful, and it's, it's there for, to be just that, to be helpful. And so if you have any questions, please call our water department, and that's 986-2031, and we'll go through it with you if you need, need the help. And also, you can reach out to, to the state, and that number is 833-690-0208. And that is, that is it, but I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, if you, a lot of people are having hard times paying bills, costs of things are rising, and I think this could be very helpful. So that is that. And welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
So opening up to privilege of the floor. Okay. Carrie, anything else?
Oh, no, I was just reading the other part, but I thought it.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to motions, and Tom, would you take trustee Chaney's motion?
Motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick employee Mike Nelly to carry over 2.65 vacation days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to authorize the mayor to enter a temporary revocable license agreement with the Warwick Grove Homeowners Association and their snow removal contractor, Wright Brothers Landscaping, to allow two pieces of motorized equipment to be parked inside the fenced area of the sewage pump station located off Miss Tucky Circle.
Okay.
Second.
We have discussion, please?
Yes, please.
So I read the revocable agreement, even though the wording there does not seem revocable unless all parties agree. So this is, just to kind of recap, this is village-owned property that the homeowners association is looking to park snow removal equipment on village property.
It is property that we have an easement on, but it's actual property that's owned by Warwick Grove.
Homeowners Association.
The homeowners association.
So it's property owned by the Village of Warwick, I mean, sorry, Warwick Grove Homeowners Association, but the village has an easement on it for the pump station?
Yes.
Yes, they're not allowed to put anything on it, build anything on it, because if they need to get the pump station, they have a problem with the equipment that would go in to remove snow. I don't know if they keep it there all year, if they just put it before the storms come out.
Just before this, well, they'll, they'll keep it throughout the winter season.
All right, so there'll be some equipment out there, and then when there's a storm, they can remove the snow, and then they, they put them back. The problem, the reason for that was that there was nowhere to put them otherwise, and they either had to haul them out and take forever for them to get there and remove the snow, or they had to park them on the streets there, and of course, if there was snow, there was problems with that, because this was kind of work around.
And the original request, of course, was to park them in the top of Memorial Park, and we did not feel that that was appropriate. So that's where this, I mean, after much discussion, and we, we did a site visit with the HOA and pointed out that this was a much better location, so.
Do liability concerns?
Well, we have, we both have insurance, and we have mutual indemnification clauses in the agreement as far as that goes, so.
Okay.
Why would it be mutual?
Well, if we're negligent and they're negligent, then if they're negligent, they indemnify us, if we're negligent, we indemnify them. In either event, you're covered by insurance anyway, so the odds of the indemnification kicking in are very, very slim, but it's standard practice.
But the, the pump station, so if, if, if sort of the move, removal or the placement of the snow, sorry.
Equipment.
The snow removal equipment damage, somehow damages the pump station, we have to pay for that with our own insurance.
It would be covered by their insurance, because they would have damaged it if you can prove it.
But it says will hold harmless.
Will hold harmless them in the event that they're sued because of something that the village did. They'll hold harmless you in the event that you're sued or just damaged your property because of something they did. That's what the mutual indemnification clauses are for. If you're concerned about the language, we can certainly go back to them and ask for modifications, it's not take it or leave it.
Is there, will the placement of this equipment disrupt the access to the pump station in any way?
No.
That's been established?
Yeah.
And DPW was like involved in that?
Mike Moser was there as part, yeah.
Is this a grassed-in area, or is it asphalt?
It is a mixture, yeah. But there's plenty of room, which is a good thing. But we recognized when we were there, where the neighbors have no windows that even look out at this area, so it's, you know, there's no site issues. And with two pieces of equipment, we don't feel that the noise levels will be extreme when they start them up.
Well, we've been working on this issue for a number of years, and this sounds like a pretty good compromise in fenced-in areas. It's their property, it's not on our parks' property. Warwick Grove doesn't do something if it doesn't look like it should, meaning neat, you know, so.
Okay, I have no more questions.
Charlie, anything else?
No, I mean, I agree. This is a much better solution than looking to put it on our, on the, the park property. It's Village of, I mean, it's Warwick Grove property, we have an easement for the pump station. I guess like, I haven't, I haven't seen this, you know, space, so, but I trust.
I'll give you a tour.
Well, I mean, if, if, the fact that DPW looked, and they're not concerned with about any impacts to the pump station or access, I'm okay with that. And if you're comfortable with like all of the liability language.
It's fine, I mean, could you write it more, you know, one side or change the word? And you could, you can wind up in pretty much the same place at the end of the day. The fact you have insurance should be sufficient to, it's not that great a risk with what they're doing.
Do we, how, what is the financial arrangement with the existing easement? Do we pay for that? Like, is that something that we paid for upfront? Was it a no-cost easement?
No, no cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further questions.
So we have a second, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My turn.
Yes.
Motion to grant permission to the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 4662 to hold a Veterans Day Parade Friday, November 11th, as per their facility use application and parade map received October 4th, 2022. Parade lineup will take place at High Street at 10:30 a.m., with step-off beginning at 11:11. The parade will culminate with a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park at approximately noon, 12:00 p.m. The parade route has been approved by the Town of Warwick Police Department, complete park permit, security deposit, and proof of insurance have been received.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget modification and transfer request as per the village treasurer's letter dated October 13, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Village of Warwick Recreation Department to hold a Halloween Parade on Monday, October 31st, 2022. Lineup will be at 4:30 p.m. on High Street. The parade will start at 5:00 p.m. and proceed down Main Street to Railroad Avenue, ending on Railroad Green for a costume contest. The Warwick Police have been notified and will assist with the event.
Second.
You know, I want to make a mention, and I will reach out to the chief, there was a request for more police presence in, on the Welling Avenue neighborhood, and I think that's justified considering the amount of folks, even though we do close it down, it's still.
For trick-or-treating.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, in years past, there's been vehicles coming through, and yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Anyway, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close Oakland Court, Welling Avenue, and Orchard Street on Monday, October 31st, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., and to close High Street from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on October 31st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to impose a Halloween curfew for all persons under the age of 18 unless accompanied by a village, I mean, by a parent or guardian on all village streets and parks and other public areas in the Village of Warwick between the hours, excuse me, of 9:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 30th, 2022, to 6:00 a.m. Monday, October 31st, 2022, and again on Monday, October 31st, 2022, from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., Tuesday, November 1st, 2022.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a few addendums, or a couple of addendums.
I have them here. If you want to look at them.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's me, right?
That's you, yeah.
Motion to rescind the motion made on November, September 19th, 2022, approving the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of two, two, I'm sorry, $229,577.50 due to an error in the calculation of the abstract.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims for the abstract dated September 19th, 2022, in the amount of $229,727.50.
Okay.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's less than a $200 difference.
Yeah, but for the record.
No, I know.
Transparency, yeah.
Yeah, letting folks know. Motion to rescind the motion made on October 3rd, 2022, approving the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $223,465.64 due to an error in the calculation of the abstract.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims for the abstract dated October 3rd, 2022, in the amount of $224,044, I mean, $224,044.42.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then.
Addendum two.
Yeah, addendum two. Tom, I wanted you to do.
Is this supposed to be doing announcements?
That is.
On street.
On street, yeah, we'll, we'll do that at the very end, yeah.
Oh, you wanted me to do the number two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution setting public hearing on proposed sidewalk improvements at Railroad Green public parkland space. Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation has proposed a project that will in part improve the sidewalks along Route 17A/94 in the Village of Warwick to ensure compliance with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act, and whereas a portion of the project is located adjacent to the village-owned land, parcel SBL 211-6-1.21, known as Railroad Green, located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Oakland Avenue and Railroad Avenue. And whereas the existing sidewalk along Railroad Green has not been constructed entirely within NYSDOT's right-of-way boundary, as a result of which, in order to construct the ADA-compliant improvements, it will be necessary for the NYSDOT to acquire ownership of approximately 447 square feet of Railroad Green. And whereas Railroad Green is municipal park, public parkland space, and as such constitutes a Section 4F resource under 23 CFR 774, and whereas under 23 CFR 774, alienation of Section 4F parkland requires public notice and an opportunity for the public to review and comment on the proposal. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the village board hereby sets a public hearing for 7:30 p.m. on November 7, 2022, to receive and discuss comments from public, from the public on the proposed sidewalk improvements and alienation of land at Railroad Green, and that the village clerk is directed to publish and post due notice of the public hearing no later than 10 days prior to the public hearing date.
Second.
Okay, and that's a roll call.
Trustee Foster? Yes. Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Lindbergh?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes. Thank you. And so, would you make that announcement?
Yes. So there is no overnight on-street parking in the Village of Warwick from November 1st to April 1st. Between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.
And that will be on our website, and we'll post it on Facebook, so it'll be out there. People pretty much know that. Golden rule. So reports tonight, trustee Foster, you have anything?
Yes, actually, we received an announcement that St. Anthony's Community Hospital is offering an educational virtual Stop the Bleed program for community members on October 26th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Stop the Bleed is a national campaign that encourages bystanders to become trained, equipped, and empowered to help in a bleeding emergency before professional help arrives. The registration address is located at the Albert Wisner Public Library's website. I also created a tiny URL, so you could go to tinyurl.com/warwickstopthebleed.
It's a wonderful program, I'm glad they're doing it.
Yeah.
Offering it.
And it'll be a Zoom event.
Yep. Trustee Lindbergh?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good, sure.
I will say that the Children's Book Festival was really good this year, quite a large turnout, there were food trucks. The location at Stanley Devine Park, I was there, I personally thought it worked really well. It gave enough space for parks. It gave enough space for parking, for the food trucks, and the tent that was put up was great. So really well attended, and I look forward to next year's.
So this year, the pilot program was the parking on the grass area near the, um, the basketball court, and do you think that was effective?
Well, fortunately, it was, it was dry.
It, well, that's, that's true. We wouldn't have done it if it had been soggy, but, yeah, it was.
I mean, I looked at it afterwards, and didn't, it didn't seem like it killed any of the grass or anything, so.
Considering the, the carnival had been.
It was just there, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It seems like it's growing in participation, because it, I don't see how that could have been managed on railroad.
Yeah, that's true. Where, where do people park, exactly.
Well, and this, and how many people were there? There's a lot of people.
The one thing, though, and, and the reason why we opted to try that parking was because of the spillover effects on the neighborhoods that surround Stanley Deming Park. I mean, it, it starts, you know, going up the curb. Actually, in, in some cer- certain situations, it creates traffic issues, you know, where emergency vehicles may not be able to get through. So that, uh, in that respect, I think it was very effective.
Yeah, I, I think, I still saw people trying to park every which way. I don't think that we have enough maybe clear signage to put people in a designated parking area. But, you know, we got by.
Good. So I don't have a report this evening, but we do have to go into executive session, so if I could have the. If we could go.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss proposed acquisitions, sale or lease, or real property, or proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only one publicity would substantially affect the value thereof.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So when we come back, we will not, and we get into regular session, we will not make any more motions or determinations, so.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie.
Always bring Carrie, right, come here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah.